I'd call this meeting to order. We're going to open with a moment of silence and the pledge led by Ms. Owen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have quorum tonight. Mr. Norman is not here due to a medical emergency regarding his family. And Ms. Satterfield is actually out of town on business, her person or her work business. And Mr. McMillan will be here, but he's running late. But we will move forward with the six board members. Are there any requested changes to the agenda for this called meeting? Move to accept agenda? Moved by Owen, second by Horn. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, the purpose of this is to elect a new chair and vice chair for this upcoming year. I will say a little more in the regular called meeting. I have really enjoyed serving this year, though, but am willing and would prefer to step aside for this next year, so I would appreciate my name not being submitted for nomination. So, having said that, I'm going to read what Terry wrote. We've got all that down. All right, the chair, the floor is open for nominations for chair for this coming school year. Do I see any? Ms. Bab?
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. I'd like to nominate Susan Horn.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, the floor is closed to nominations. And even though this would be... Go ahead, Ms. Owen.
I was going to move that we accept Ms. Horn as chair by acclamation.
All right. Any objection to that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So Ms. Horn will take the helm at our regular voting meeting beginning next Wednesday. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, the floor is now open for vice chair. Ms. Bowns?
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Owen.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Christie?
I would like to nominate Virginia Bab.
All right. And do we have a second for Ms. Bab? I'll second that. All right. Are there any other nominations? All right. We will have a voice roll call on this, beginning with District 2. The nominations are...
Does anybody want to say anything?
Oh, thank you. Would either of the candidates like to speak? Or anyone else? Okay, seeing no lights, we will move on to the election of our vice chair. The nominees are Jennifer Owen and Virginia Bab. All right. Ms. Owen?
Are we just answering with the names?
Just say a last name.
Owen.
Ms. Bab?
Bab.
Ms. Bowns?
Owen.
Ms. Christie?
Bab.
Ms. Horn?
Owen.
Ms. Hill?
Bab.
That's three votes for Ms. Owen and three votes for Ms. Bab.
All right. I believe, Mr. Law Director, we have two options here. We can either continue to take a vote, or we can defer until next week and address this again when we have more board members here. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, you can... You had asked for comments before the first vote. You could ask for another vote and comments before that. But if no one wants to make any comments, and if no one wants to change their vote, then the other option would be to postpone it until, you know, next week, or... It's been postponed for a month before, so...
All right.
Yeah.
Ms. Bab?
I don't know if this is something for us to move, but I would move for next week, and we actually can have the full board. I mean, we're missing such a large majority that I think that would be courteous to the majority of our board.
All right.
I agree. I concur.
Do we need that in the form of a motion, Mr. Law Director?
Yes, I would recommend a motion and a second, and then a vote.
I move to postpone the vote on the vice chair to next week's meeting.
Thank you. Motion by Bab, second by Bowns. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we will defer that until next week's meeting. And that is the one and only purpose of this meeting, so do I see a motion to adjourn? All right. Heard and seconded in it, all in favor?
Aye.
We will adjourn, and our regular meeting will begin at 5:00. This meeting is called to order. We're going to begin with a moment of silence and the pledge by Ms. Owen.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, with seven of nine board members present. I do not see if you are out there and you're elected official. Please wave. Moving on, I've got a couple of announcements here. County Commission and the Board of Education will meet in a joint work session on Wednesday, September 11th, at 3:30 p.m., just prior to our 5:00 p.m. regular session meeting in the main Assembly Room for updates and discussion regarding the Andrew Johnson Building. Also, for your information, several board members will be attending TSBA Fall District East meeting on Tuesday, September 17th, at 4:30, and that will be at Maryville High School. All right, are there any changes to the agenda?
May I have your approval?
Thank you. I just am noticing that light way down there that came on. Thank you. All right, we have a motion to accept by Horn, second by Hill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to the superintendent's report, please.
Madam Chair, board members, before I begin my report, I'd like to take a minute to thank Chief LaDuce's and our school security officers, Sheriff Spangler and his officers, and Chief Thomas and her officers for their quick response yesterday to a situation at one of our high schools. While we are grateful that there wasn't an actual threat at Powell High School, I want to reassure our families that student and staff safety is our first priority, and we take every possible threat very seriously. We cannot do this without the support of Knox County Sheriff's Office, the Knoxville Police Department, and other enforcement and emergency services agencies. I also want to say how proud I felt when I was at Powell High School yesterday and saw how they handled the situation. I want to commend Principal Dr. Chad Smith, his administrative team, and his staff for their leadership, and the students and their families for the way they conducted themselves under very frightening circumstances. Now for my report, I'd like to make everyone aware of the 2019 College and Career Fair that will happen later this month. This annual event is a great opportunity for our students to learn about their options after high school, and will include representatives from more than 80 colleges and other post-secondary options. The College and Career Fair will take place on Tuesday, September 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at the Jacob Building in Chilhaway Park, and students can find out all the details from their counselor. Another tradition we look forward to is the Knox County Schools Coupon Book Campaign, which is one of the district's most important fundraisers. This year's campaign will run from September 13 through September 30. I don't want to give away too many details, but I'll say I'm confident that this year's campaign will be out of this world, so stay tuned. I'd like to conclude my report by asking Mr. Russ Oaks to give us an update on the three elementary schools that are on the capital improvement plan, and this was requested by Mrs. Hill last month. So, Mr. Oaks?
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and I'll go through, and if you have any questions, stop me as we go through, and I'll ask Mr. Dillingham to answer all the hard ones. We have provided to the Knox County Procurement Office the information required to do a request for qualifications to identify architects for the schools, and they have finished that work. And we anticipate that that RFQ will be released Friday and advertised in local media on Sunday. And there is a period of time for interested firms to submit their qualifications for review and adjudication by the committee that will be established for that purpose. Those qualifications are due to be submitted by the 16th of October. And then, once those are in, it will probably take three to four weeks for the committee to do its work to assess the qualifications and then rank order them in order to determine which projects the architects would draw. More specifically, we've got to do some property actions with each of these schools, and we have engaged the Knox County Development Corporation, KCDC, to help us in some of those property actions and to establish the groundwork for those. With respect to Adrian Burnett, you recall, we did an analysis of that site about a year ago, and the architectural firm that did the analysis indicated that if we picked up a couple of parcels of property adjacent to the campus that are behind the campus, that we could build a new Adrian Burnett School on that site and would not have to phase it. We would not have to do anything to disturb the existing school until the new school was complete. That property that we identified and that the architects identified is the Woodvale Murphy Hills Recreation Association's swimming pool. So, we've... KCDC has contacted the owners and made an initial contact, and their reaction to the proposal was mixed, but we have moved forward to get an appraisal on that piece of property. We're actually getting two appraisals. And it has been a slower process than normal for us because since the pool has a... or since the property has a pool on it, the appraisers have had to engage a pool expert in order to do evaluation of the pool and work through that. So it's a... Nothing is easy in this process, so we expect to get that back in any time in the near future here so that we can identify that and determine how we want to proceed once that we have the appraisal in hand. With respect to Northwest Elementary School, we've talked to our representative at KCDC, and they've presented us a package of property that might be... that would be of appropriate size in the northwest sector of the county, located generally between Corinth Elementary School and Hardin Valley Elementary School. It's already on the market. They identified four parcels. We looked at it. There was one parcel that we felt, because of access and grade and the way the parcel lay, that it might be acceptable for school purposes, and it was in a very good location. And we asked KCDC to contact the Realtor and begin a discussion. When that occurred, the Realtor indicated that he had sold the property six months ago and had not updated all of his listings. So, our best piece of property was no longer on the market. So, we've gone back. We've identified about half a dozen parcels of property of appropriate size at different locations around the Hardin Valley, Karnes School Zones, and have asked KCDC to reach out to the owners of those parcels to gauge their interest in selling those pieces of property. So that's what we're in the process of doing right now, and we'll work through that. And when we can identify something that might be acceptable, might be buildable, we'll bring that to the board to discuss in detail and for y'all to act on. One thing that is important to us as we go through this process is that we go ahead and get the architects identified for the process, because then an architect... an architectural firm would be invaluable to us in identifying property and determining suitability and buildability for that piece of property before we actually make an offer and buy a piece of property. So that's where we are on those two projects. With respect to the Lonsdale Project, the mayor's office has indicated to us that they would like to lead the construction process for Lonsdale. And given that the mayor has indicated an interest in the county paying for some of the debt on the Lonsdale property, we thought this was an appropriate action. So we're in the process right now of developing a memorandum of agreement to bring to the board for its consideration to that end, to put some structure around the county taking on the management of the Lonsdale project and how that goes forward. We expect to be able to bring that to the board for its meeting in October. We've also begun discussions with the City of Knoxville, and we've provided them a draft agreement to do a property swap for Lonsdale Park and Sammy Hill School to allow us to incorporate Lonsdale Park into the campus of Lonsdale School as it currently exists, and allowing us to build the majority of a new school on that site. And those documents are currently with the city, and I think among the staff folks, we have an agreement in principle, and we'll get something back and bring it back to the board for board action. Our goal there is to do that also for the October board meeting. Given the nature of this project, though, that agreement will probably have to go not just through the board, it'll have to go through the County Commission, it'll have to go through City Council, it'll have to be signed off on by both mayor's offices. So this will be, you know, a step-by-step process as we work our way through it. But at this point, our understanding is that there's not anybody that's not supportive of it at this point, so we'll see where we get to on that. So, we've got a lot of things in the works. We've got a lot of stuff coming to a head, I think, in October, and we'll see where we get to. The architect will probably try to get that in place, probably for your December meeting as we look at that. And, you know, Doug, if I get something wrong here, come down and correct me. So, having said that, are there questions or anything that I need to add to what I've
Russ, on the Lonsdale building and the fact that the county's wanting to, it sounds like, take over that construction, is that the same process that we had when we built Gibbs and Hardin Valley? Is that the same type of arrangement?
Let me... I'll go as far as I can go, and if you want to get into the details of that, Doug will probably need to answer that. But what I understand they're going to do or are interested in doing is the design-build-delivery method, which is the method that was used at or for those two projects. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Is that pool behind Adrian Burnett, is that a working pool?
My understanding it is, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. And, let's see. So is your goal still to break ground on the Northwest School next summer?
Was that my goal?
Yes! Yes, it was!
Well, you know, we won't even have money in the budget for design of the Northwest until next school year, so I would be really surprised if we break ground on the Northwest Elementary School next summer, maybe the following summer.
Okay.
And just, we... In the capital plan, we had provided what I call a concept zone for a school, another elementary school in the northwest part of the county.
Right.
We may, because of the availability of property and the suitability of property out there, we may have to get outside that concept zone and, you know, design some other zone. It just depends on what we can do with property and where we finally wind up being able to find some. The other challenge for us out there is, as we build schools, you get to where the population density is so much such that we're getting schools very close to each other. And it's difficult to keep one school out of another school's parent responsibility zone. And that's not necessarily a requirement, but it is something that we like to try to do.
Gotcha. All right. Anything else? Is there anything else?
That concludes our report, Madam Chair, unless there are further questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oaks.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. I appreciate that very much. All right, moving along to our regular agenda, I do have a discussion item I'd like to bring. We received a request to add an item for consideration for Bricky MacLeod Elementary School. You have a hard copy at the table, but to summarize, the school is requesting our approval to purchase an eye-ready reading and math diagnostic and instruction site license at the cost of $25,890 using internal school funds. It's my understanding that they turned this request in prior to the agenda deadline, but due to issues with the agreement, it was delayed, and the vendor has now agreed to the terms used for the 1819 school year. Without objection, this will be added as Item 5C19 to the regular session agenda, and any questions can be directed to Mr. Dupler or Dr. Ryswick at the end of the consent Moving on to board agenda items, I am looking at number five, Item C, Items and Contracts, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question on number four. Oh, I think that would be for Mr. Bolton. What is included? How is this going to be used? Is it a specific... Is it for any employee or a specific position?
Thank you, Ms. Horn, Madam Chair. In the past, we have used the Principal Insight as a screening tool for principal placements and strength builders and trying to get a good idea of where principal strengths lie in the placement and the building, the staff around those folks. So we've used that for a number of years. Prior to that, we actually used Teacher Insight, and we went away from that practice, I think it was... Mr. Thomas may have to help me. I think it was 2015 we went away from Principal Insight, or Teacher Insight.
2016, I believe.
2016, yeah. So, but we started... We began using Teacher Insight. Mr. Thomas, you may have to help me. When did we begin Teacher Insight? That was...
Well, gosh, we went way back with Gallup before it was even Teacher Insight. We had a contract with them probably in the early 90s, I think, and it was Teacher Perceiver at that point, and then they sort of refined the process, made it an online interview process to give us data on candidates, and it does ensure that all applicants will get an interview. It's an online-type situation, but I think that would really, you know, help us in terms of, at times, folks indicate, hey, I never... I put an application in, I don't hear from anybody, and we certainly don't want to miss out on applicants. So if we could, the board would consider approving this, then it allows us to make sure all applicants are interviewed and then gives us some data and some feedback for our central office staff and our principals.
There's great professional development for the strengths of teachers that we could use built in that comes alongside of the Teacher Insight.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, I'm looking at number five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and the new recently added 19. Moving on to number six, board policies. Questions on A? Questions on B?
Well, yeah, this is on A.
Ms. Bab?
Because I guess B is just getting rid of B, right? And A is substituting A for B? Okay.
Yes.
I guess my understanding of this is we're really adding the online fundraising part in.
Sorry.
We're adding the online fundraising in, and I guess a little... This is probably from Mr. Dupler. Down at the bottom it says, "Online fundraising shall not be used on behalf and for the benefit of an outside party. Employees shall not engage in online fundraising in their official capacity as district employees." I guess I have a question. To me, and we were having this discussion a little bit before, most of this is about, like, GoFundMe accounts, I guess, and stuff, and so are we saying teachers cannot do that in their official capacity? I guess I just want a little bit of clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Madam Chair. So, it's... What's been happening is that teachers have been signing up for these things, such as, well, GoFundMe is one, but I think Donors Choose is probably the biggest one, and a teacher will sign up, and Donors Choose in particular requires the teacher to sign up individually. Choose in particular requires the teacher to sign up individually, an individual account. The teacher has to put in certain information that he or she says is accurate. So, I mean, the teacher has, has a little bit of liability there when the teacher signs up. But ironically, when the teacher signs up, the teacher's signing up as, as a teacher for a school and usually for a particular class. So, so it's an official type of capacity, but the website itself, or the, or the, the third-party company is asking the teacher to be individually liable. So I felt, and, and the administrators, leadership team felt that, you know, that, hey, we want to try and protect teachers, obviously. Because, because anything coming by way of donations in terms of money and items are going to be going to the school. So, so why should the teacher have this individual liability? So this was generated from, in conjunction with TSBA, am I right on that, Ron? Okay. And obviously, we can, we can tweak this as we need to. I mean, but this was just something that we wanted to get before you because, because this was our quest to get before you because, because teachers would like to do this, you know, and have done it in the past. So, I mean, I mean, we can, we can make adjustments. And, and another thing I would throw out there for the board's consideration is that, is that perhaps we need to get with, with Donors Choose and try and get some terms that are more acceptable for, for district-wide use instead of making a teacher potentially individually liable.
Okay. So I guess I'm confused about what we're allowing teachers to do or not. So we are allowing teachers to go on Donors Choose? Because to me, the way that it's written, it's, it's saying that we are not letting them do that. So that's where I guess I'm a little bit confused. Because when it says, "Employees shall not engage in online fundraising in their official capacity."
I think, I think what it's, what it's trying to say, and, and it probably does need to be reworded. I mean, I mean, I, again, I did not produce this, you know, this was, this was produced largely from just a TSBA recommended form. But, but I believe what it's trying to say is that, you know, a teacher shouldn't, shouldn't take on the responsibility. You know, a teacher should either already have district approval. And, and I think that's what it's saying here is that, you know, again, if the district already has a contract of some type with Donors Choose, then the teacher doesn't take on that responsibility. I mean, it's already district-approved. And I think that's what it's trying to say is that there needs to be that district approval so that the district takes on the liability.
Okay.
But it's probably not saying it very well.
Okay. I, I would be confused if I was a teacher, what I was allowed to do. I, I mean, I think we're trying to give them guidelines, but if I was a teacher, and I'm not, so maybe some of our former teachers, I think it'd be very confusing what I'm allowed to do and what I'm not allowed to do.
Ms. Babb?
Yes. Before I speak, can I get Mr. McPherson to kind of give some more information on this? Because I know I've talked to him several times and he might could add some clarity and then recommendation that I have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we, we have the same, we had the same questions on the last, particularly the last sentence of that. Because it seems to almost undo everything that it has said prior to that. So we need to get some clarification on that. My, my reaction to that, as I read that, was that, kind of go along with what Mr. Dubler said, is that what it's trying to say is that teachers or any school employee cannot on their own, without approval at the district level, go out and, and do this. So, because in, in July, effective July of the state, well, it's prohibited. Let me say it this way. LEAs are prohibited from approving online fundraising activities absent of a policy. And so there is, there, and this did not catch us off guard, we knew this was coming. But what, what we've, what we've run into are some of the issues that Mr. Dubler's talked about. You do lose some internal control, potentially, when, when a district allows online fundraising. There are also issues with how much control you might have with safeguarding of cash. So all of those things we were, we were having to grapple with. So we didn't want to, we wanted to protect employees in the district as much as possible, but yet not be overly burdensome to schools that are trying to conduct online fundraising. Back several months ago, Metro Nashville just prohibited it altogether. And, which is not, not what I'm saying we should do here. But I'm just saying there are some, some, there's some caution that has to be exercised in, in regards to this. So with, so I do think that language can be improved. And, and so what I would, my thought is that between first and second reading, what the board may want to do is convene a policy review committee meeting so we can kind of tweak some of this and make sure we get it right. Our concern was, is that as we were grappling with the language on some of this, that meanwhile, school started several weeks ago. And we've heard from some, some folks at school level and possibly board members have heard from some too. And, and so it's kind of put the shackles on, on some, some folks that otherwise were utilizing these crowdfunding sites to raise money. And so what we were trying to get it right, but at the same time, the clock was ticking. So what we thought maybe the best approach would be, let's just use, on first reading, let's go out with the policy language recommended by TSBA, although there are some issues, like you had pointed out, that we have and we need to maybe provide some clarity to the language. What are we really trying to do here? But at least we get it in front of the board and we can kind of get the ball rolling on this.
Okay. Ms. Horn?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, Mr. McPherson and I, oh, I'm sorry, what?
Oh, well, I, I, forgive me, were you not finished? I'm sorry.
No, I was going to follow up. I just want Mr. McPherson to give us more clarity on it. No, that's fine. Because I began to hear about it back in August and was very concerned. One of my high schools uses one of these crowdfunding sources. And they're still waiting, and we're now going to be into October. And they've been able to generate like $10,000 for their band program every year. And so it concerns me that we didn't get ahead of this. I understand why we didn't. And it's still very problematic. But I do, I do think that going the way of Metro Nashville is not in Knox County's best interest. And I just think that whatever we do, hopefully as a board, next Wednesday, we can tweak the language or perhaps ask Mr. Dubler or somebody to work on that and have it ready for us next week to vote on it at first reading. But I'm just, I really just believe that, and I've talked to Mr. McPherson some about that, that my suggestion would be, regardless of what we do, is that our superintendent send out a letter to our principals as to where we're at, or possibly even making them aware that we're not prohibiting this, we just need, we're trying to protect them. And I think that's the message that we're wanting to send. And we aren't condoning it or prohibiting it, but they do so at their own peril. And I think if we send out that letter to the principals, we need to follow it to the teachers because we don't want the prin, the, a teacher to be able to come back and say, well, my principal never told me. So I think that would be one way of maybe moving the ball a little bit forward without, because some of these schools are really hurting right now, not being able to. And we're already three months into the school year. So anyway, that's all. Ms. Horn?
Thank you. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, so just so I'm clear, the current guidelines that schools have been given is that they cannot conduct online fundraising. Is that correct?
What, what we are telling them is, per the state, we, we as a district cannot approve those-
Without the policy.
-without a policy, right. So whereas once before, we, we could do that. But the state has, has, has actually prohibits districts from, from doing that. You could do it.
But you have to have a policy.
Correct.
Okay. So let me ask you this. On line seven, which is number one, it says, "Fundraising activities shall be authorized by the board and shall be the pur, for the purpose of supplementing funds for established school programs and not for supplementing funds, which are the responsibility of the public." Does that mean you can't fundraise for teach, for a teaching position? Is that what that, how that's to be read? I think that's confusing.
I think that's very open to interpretation. I would defer to Mr. Dubler on that. But I think this is purposely, I'm going to interject an opinion here, that this is purposely ambiguous in some ways. So it's not to restrict schools from fundraising, but to try to send a message. But that, that's just, I'm speculating.
All right. And then I would just say that we, on number five, it says, "The director of school shall determine." I think we'd probably want to insert the director of schools designate into that. So, but I, I agree with Ms. Babb. I think we need to get the, a policy in place as quickly as possible because I know that our schools depend on this type of fundraising. Thank you.
Mr. Dubler, did you have a comment before I move to another discussion?
I was just going to say, I, I agree with Mr. McPherson that, that, that it is ambiguous and, and, you know, I could certainly see, using Ms. Horn's example, that trying to replace a salary with this would be extremely problematic. But, but I think it's a much closer call when you get into items for a classroom. I mean, you know, you could make the argument that that should be provided, but you could also make the argument, depending on the item, that, hey, this is more of a, an accessory or, or something that's not absolutely necessary. So I think it's ambiguous for, on purpose.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a, a question and I, it's just for clarification purposes. Some of the schools have golf tournaments that where they raise substantial amounts of money and, and, you know, if, if it winds up, if the money winds up going to one of the larger organizations, the one that's like, say, football or, or band that has a significant number of members, it can run into the thousands of dollars. It's not like 500 or a thousand or something. Now, the question that, that I have is that most of the money is made, is my understanding, they, you know, charge fees and, and everything. They give out prizes and everything. But where they make the bulk of the money is hole sponsorships. And they'll sell these hole sponsorships for like, say, a hundred, $150 or so. Now, I guess my question is, would, you know, you could, there are various ways to communicate. If, if somebody at, say, the school was either because they belong to the organization that was involved, or they were just helping out, if they made telephone calls, sent an email, whatever, however, that they contacted people trying to gather up some of this money, would that, would that be protected? Or, the one that I'm most familiar with, what they do is they, they take it up and then it, the person, well, each individual that collects it, they're responsible for the ones they sell. And they go around and collect it. And then they turn it into the treasure of the organization. And then, you know, the, the, the group votes on it as a whole and in conjunction with, I think it's for the most part, in conjunction with the principal as to, you know, whether the money, this money, this 5,000 goes to scholarships, or this goes to the band, or goes to whatever sport or, or whatever. Do you see any problems with that, Mr. Dubler?
Well, I think, so, so we've got the, the Tennessee Internal Accounting Manual. And I think, I think that covers a lot of what you're talking about, Mr. McMillan. And obviously, the district has to maintain some controls on this. And I think, you, you know, the previous policy did, did some of what you're talking about because, because you're talking about more traditional fundraising. And there's also a policy that talks about what's sponsorships versus advertising. So, so you've got some of that in there as well. But, but it's going to be a case-by-case basis though, because, I mean, if the school's doing it, that's one thing. But, but a lot of times you have school support organizations, whether it's an athletic booster club, whether it's a PTA, PTO, or, or something like that. And, and so you're going to have different rules that, that are going to apply to that organization.
Yeah. If, you know, if, if I work at a given high school and I call somebody that runs a local business, be it the hardware store, the automotive parts place or something, and ask them, hey, we're having a golf tournament, could you be a hole sponsor? I know you can't come and everything. I think for the most part, for the most part, they would respond positively, I, I'm pretty sure. But for the most part, from a mental aspect, they're going to associate the person that called them that works at the high school with whatever organization and stuff. So it's, you see what I'm talking about? And I didn't do a very good job of making it clear. But, but it's, it's not like, you know, somebody ended, totally independent calls them that they don't know.
No, no, I agree. I mean, you know, the district does have responsibility to maintain some type of oversight with school support organizations. I know, I know that's part of Garrett Raiden's job in the administration, and that's a big job. I mean, because there's, there's, there's a ton flat out of school support organizations. And, and, you know, it's hard, it's hard to keep them all straight. But, but, but you've identified one of the issues, which is if someone's using the district's name or, or a certain school's name within the district, then, then they want that to be accurate.
You probably are not using the district's name because, you know, to be honest, they're much more likely to give to a, an individual school that's in their community-
Right.
...rather than, you know, just give it to Knox County Schools and let them spend it however they're going to. They're probably getting a lot of negative responses that way. But I just want to make sure that, I think every bit of this money that I'm talking about can be tracked if, if it is necessary. But I just want, want to make sure that they, that, that nothing, that, you know, that, that they get into it like next year or later this year. And, and, you know, hey, you can't do that because, you know, somebody, somebody raises, there's always somebody that possibly, somebody might raise the issue or something, you know?
I think, I think the answer, Mr. McMillan, is, is that these organizations can do that if they do it the right way. I mean, I mean, they're supposed to-
Okay.
...submit paperwork and, and get the, the authorization from, from the district.
And you think we have the process and somebody in place to monitor, to make sure that that, that happens?
The process is there. And I'm sure Garrett, I don't want to speak for him, I think he's here. He, he would probably say that he could use some help monitoring because it's a big job.
I'm sure it is. Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? I think what I'm hearing is that we might want to look at some revision even in the first reading. So thank you for that discussion. Moving along, I am looking at, we're still in six, Board Policies, letter B, and letter C. Moving on to, Ms. Owen, are you on C?
Yes. I was just going to ask Mr. Dubler to clarify the change in the second version.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm earning my pay tonight. So on this one, our office actually, actually brought this, this revision to the board. Brought it, actually, we should have brought it last year. I mean, and I'll take responsibility for that. But, but the law changed last year to, to add a slight variation in the assault provision of the zero tolerance law. The language that I've, that I've suggested comes straight out of the Tennessee Code. And, and it's, it's, I'm happy to answer any questions about the specific language. I tried to clean it up a little bit as well. The previous policy acted like a school resource officer is a, is a school employee. And I think as the board knows from recent discussions, that's not, that's not the case. A school resource officer is employed by an outside law enforcement agency. So, so I tried to clarify that. And then, and then I, I communicated with Ms. Owen and, and she had a, a citizen concern about, about the change. And we talked about it back and forth and then, and- and then we came up with the definitions that you see in the, in the, in the second version, um, and I'm, and I'm happy to support that as well, whichever way the board wants to go on this, uh, but, but the, the definitions really just give some more information. I think, I think the biggest concern from the citizen was that a, that a student could be held zero tolerance for a simple assault, and, and I can assure the board that's not the case. There has to be certain elements there, and it has to be some type of injury, whereas a simple assault may not have a, an injury, and it, and it also has to be a reckless conduct, which is, which is well above negligence. It's, it's above a simple mistake, a reckless conduct is, is something where somebody realizes the risk, but then, you know, takes, takes absolutely no action to avoid that risk. So, but, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Mine's actually, and maybe this is just some clarification, on 1A, unlawfully possess a legend drug, I honestly had no idea what that was and had to look it up because I'd never heard of it, and I guess maybe I want some clarification, 'cause I'm, I was assuming what we were talking about there is really illegal drugs, which come to find out, a legend drug is not an illegal drug, it's actually a prescription drug. So where are we talking about illegal drugs in our description of the drugs?
That, that would be the, the controlled substance, so that's.
Okay, so controlled substance is actually ille- okay. I'll be honest, I guess I didn't really realize what legend and controlled drugs really meant, so, that, thank you.
All right, Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You said that you lifted this, and I understand what you're saying about a simple mistake and everything, but didn't you say that you lifted it from Tennessee Code annotated? So, would that not make it state law?
Absolutely, and, and, and that's why, and I'm just asking the board to, to bring the policy in, in compliance with state law. I mean, I mean, the state legislator, latest, late tour, has already made this change.
Well, if they, I mean, we can pass whatever policy we want to, but if, if there is some conflict, you could have three different policies that, you know, related to it, but state law still trumps any kind of board policy, whether, you know, some people don't realize that. I guess my concern is, if somebody just, if we change this and somebody reads it and is not familiar that state law does trump that, then they think, well, you know, my child didn't do anything beyond, you know, what your policy says. Could that, is it, is there not the potential there to be somewhat confusing with somebody that wasn't familiar with state law?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. McMillan. I mean, that's, that's exactly why, uh, you know, our office is asking the board to change the policy, is because, uh, you know, in practice, I mean, I said in some of these disciplinary hearings, a lot of times, uh, principals and, and, and parents will just, will just look at the policy, and if the policy doesn't correctly reflect state law, uh, then, then there's gonna be some confusion there. And you're right, I mean, state law is going to trump policy every time if there's a conflict. So, so, so our recommendation is, you know, let's go ahead and change the policy so that it's, so that it's in line with state law, so that there is less confusion.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bounds?
This is really kind of insignificant, but, and I don't wanna mess up the policy, but I'm not the only one that didn't know what a legend drug was, 'cause Ms. Bev didn't know either. Is the, would it muddy up this part? I know, let me back up, I know this board has been very conscientious about trying to make our policies reader-friendly and friendly to the public at large. Is there any way we could add a definition there, or would that just muddy it up, or would it make it too broad to try to give some explanation to what a legend drug is? I just, I don't know, I just don't feel like the public, if they were reading, and that's kind of in keeping with what we've tried to do as a board, I just don't think the majority of the public would read legend drug and know what we were referring to, so, I don't know. If you can clarify it and add some language, that would be great. If it messes it up, then I'm okay either way.
Ms. Bounds, I'd be, I'd be happy to, to add some, I mean, that's what, that was the point of the second version, was to add some, some definition to, to the language, so we could certainly do the same thing with 1A that we're doing with 1C.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you. We are in seven. Grants. Letter A. B. C. D. E. I. And J. Seeing no lights, moving on to contracts. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, my question on this contract, does this go back to the positions that we talked about last month? Okay, so, um, okay, all right, so that's the same positions that we discussed last month. Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Bounds, did you have?
No, not on that.
All right. Looking at irregular agenda items. Letter A, resolution brought by Ms. Bounds, floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this resolution is very similar to a resolution that was passed by the Fayetteville School Board. I'd ask, um, Mr. Dubler to kind of personalize it to Knox County and just put it on there tonight, just kind of to get some discussion and feel for how the board feels about this. I will say that if all 141 school boards passed a similar resolution, I think it would do two things. One, it would put pressure on the state to fix the unfair, undersourced BEP, and two, it would continue to push back against vouchers and demand equal funding for our public schools that will be spent on private schools. So, um, in talking to Ben Torres today, this resolution will be presented at the delicate assembly of the Tennessee School Board Convention that's held this fall, but I think it would be helpful to have additional, um, boards to support this, and I just would like to be a leader instead of a follower. We didn't come up with it on our own, but I really feel like it speaks to what's happening, and we definitely need to encourage them to fund our teachers at the same rate that they're putting money into private schools. So, I know Mr. McMillan probably will not agree with me, 'cause it might upset somebody down at the state, but, uh, I think it's a good resolution for this board to pass.
Thank you, Ms. Bounds. Any other discussion? Okay, looking at, um, irregular agenda item B. Dr. Reiswick, could you address that? School calendar.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is actually a, a small change that we had to look to make sure that, that we need to bring about before the board. Previously till last year, the, um, orientation days for sixth grade and ninth grade were not on the kind of abbreviated calendar that, that was approved by the board. Uh, those were just kind of like, uh, just regular functions that we would usually do, but I think the board last year decided to put this on, uh, so that families would know the orientation, uh, for sixth grade and ninth grade. As you all know, we try to work two years ahead and kind of on the calendar so that it's out there. Uh, we made a change this year and moved that orientation day to the Thursday before school started instead of the Friday, uh, and we had overwhelming response from principals that they really liked that, so they had one more day with their staff prior to school starting. So all this is doing is just moving, uh, for the 20, uh, 20, 20, 21 calendar, it's moving that orientation day from a Friday back to a Thursday like we did this year, uh, and had response from principals that that's what they wanted to do again.
Thank you. Seeing no lights, we'll move on to item C, ACES training. Ms. Owen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I'm not sure that this will actually result in any kind of action, it's just something I wanted us to be aware of. I've been a proponent of trauma-informed practices and, um, awareness of adverse childhood experiences, and that has not changed. However, as we've moved forward with this training, um, I've been contacted by several of our staff members, and it seems that we may have forgotten or maybe not been really, um, sensitive to the needs of our staff when it comes to their own trauma. And some of them are, are very concerned about having their trauma presented or in any way out in front of the people that they work with every day. Is there, these are things that they have not discussed with the people that they work with and they don't want to. We currently don't have a clear and simple way for our staff to opt for any other kind of alternative training. They, they can call supervisors and talk with someone and have something worked out, but that's extremely difficult for someone who is very distressed about discussing their trauma. And to tell them that they have to call and talk to a supervisor downtown to work out an alternative, um, is literally making people physically sick. So, my ask is that we be aware of this as a board, and also that, um, that we find some other alternative that our staff could opt into as, in as confidential a way as possible. It sounds reasonable to say they can just go and talk to a supervisor and work out a, an alternative situation, but if, if we are suffering trauma, that's not necessarily a reasonable alternative. And so, I want to be sure that, that we're aware, but I also want to ask that before the next scheduled training, that some appropriate alternatives be developed and that our staff be made aware of those alternatives, and that we communicate with them what they need to do to be able to, um, participate in those alternatives. The people that I've talked to are not opposed to the training, they welcome the training, but they don't want to do it in a public forum, and so that's, that's what I'm asking for, that they have some confidential way or as confidential as possible, that they could opt into an alternative. Thank you.
And I'm assuming you have discussed this with the superintendent?
I have not yet.
Oh, all right. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Owen. All right, that's the last item on the regular agenda. Ms. Bounds?
I just wondered if Ms. Owen could share with us, um, the next training date? Do, are you, do you know that? You don't know that? Is there someone that could speak to that tonight, when the next ACES training is? And then I don't guess you have any alternatives in mind either, Jennifer, you just want them developed? Is that right?
It's my understanding that there are some alternatives, but that staff doesn't know how to, how to go about getting to those.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, maybe somebody can figure that out and let me know. Dr. Reiswick?
Thanks, Ms. Bounds. Uh, we currently don't have a date scheduled for the next ACES training, um, but, um, again, there's some things we can look at and see, so I just checked with Ms. Cook to make sure, so, I believe we have them scheduled this time.
Okay, thanks. Would you just let the board know and then possibly know if y'all have come up with some alternatives and how that's been shared out to the staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may add, um, Ms. Cook and I communicated back and forth about this, but it was very close to the training date, and I, I believe she was as helpful as possible at the time, but the, the staff member was very, very unwilling to, to even talk to her.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, yeah. All right, seeing no other lights, we'll move on to public forum. Ms. Horn?
Madam Chair, we have no one signed up for public forum this evening.
All right, and moving on to board forum. Would our student representative like to share anything?
Um, yes, ma'am, actually. The first student advisory council meeting will be this Monday, September the 9th, at Central High School, starting at 4:30. All of our board members are welcome to attend, in fact, we encourage it. Um, each of the county's high schools will have the opportunity to send two to four individuals to this meeting, um, to discuss different issues occurring in the county, and it offers kind of an outlet for our student voice here on the board, so. Look forward to seeing any of you.
This Thursday, I mean, this, uh, Monday at 4:30, was that correct, at Central High School? All right. Thank you, Noah, for, for grabbing that by the horn and, and moving it forward for this year. I genuinely appreciate that. The board appreciates that. Owen?
Yes, um, I believe everyone has an email from T S B A. We have an early October deadline for anything that we would like to submit to them for consideration for the entire body, for the state, if there are any resolutions that we would like to see taken up by T S B A, or if there are any, um, suggested changes to any of, of their, um, their, uh, position statements, that's what I'm trying to say. So if we have any changes, any position changes, or if we want to look at a resolution statewide, then there is that early October deadline, so we would probably need to discuss that during our workshop. Thank you.
And I, and I concur with that, and I know part of our workshop will involve legislative updates, so that'll be great to tie in before that deadline. Thank you for that. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to thank the board members for, um, for like to meet here this year. I'm honored and humbled and excited to serve and, um, just look forward to another great year. Thank you.
Ms. Bev?
Thank you. Yes, um, I just wanted to use my time at board forum to thank everyone, as Superintendent Thomas did earlier, that was involved in the safety of our students at Powell High School. It was a very traumatic day yesterday in my district, but Sheriff Tom Spangler and law enforcement chief produces Superintendent Bob Thomas and Principal Chad Smith and his amazing staff did a wonderful job with the situation at hand, so just wanted to publicly thank everyone involved.
Thank you. Kudos, kudos. Thank you for bringing that up. Mr. McMillan?
Just a comment, uh, I think that, uh, you know, with a system as large as ours, and, uh, I've been around for, you know, for a few years on the board and otherwise, and seeing a lot of opening and, of schools and the early days and, and everything, and including the event that occurred yesterday, and I think, uh, I think this year, uh, our staff, for the size of the system, did an amazing job. At least I didn't get any complaints, and, uh, I just think that, you know, that we're with, uh, we're, we're, we're doing a better job and, and, uh, you know, want, want the people that are involved to know that we, as a board, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Christie?
All right. If the board will just indulge me for one minute, um, this is my last meeting, sitting as your chair. I have been very appreciative of the vote of confidence that you all have given me, and I'm taking it seriously and, and tried to work hard to be a good representative for the board, and I could not have done any of that without all the support of each one of you, so that's much appreciated, and, um, I look forward to, uh, Ms. Horn taking the, the helm. One of the things that I, um, uh, tried to do this year was interject a little humor from time to time. I think you all- to time. I think you all know, and so I felt like it was only appropriate, since I came in with some humor, that I should leave with some humor. So, if you all will indulge me for about a three-minute YouTube video, if you will tune in, this is what schools should be. That said, happy 1920 school year to all of us. We are adjourned.